All right, six o'clock, I'm going to officially call this meeting to order. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. We surely do appreciate it. If I could get everybody to stand and then just please remain standing. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as strong.
Mr. Caldwell, would you please intervene? And if you would, please remain standing in a moment of silence for our neighbors who have passed. We have a few that mentioned my name is Theodore Wineski, or Julian Brandon, Betty Guthrie Webb, and James Spear. Thank you so much. Please be seated. I'd like to thank Ms. Holtz for these lovely point settings that have made our place very festive this evening. Thank you, ma'am. And at this time, please remind everybody to either cut your cell phones off or put them on vibrate. I'm sure you all have some lovely ringtones we can talk about later. And if there's anybody commissioner wise that has a conflict of interest, please let us know right now. Now, we'll move right on down the line for adoption of the agenda as it is. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to go down.
Second. All in favor? Jim? Next up, public comments. Do we have anybody sign up? Will you sign it? And we don't have... Susan's not here, planning board, so we'll...
Yeah.
Is there anything you'd like to...
No, I'll brief the board on the planning board's comments when we get to the appropriate item on the agenda with the special use permit.
All right. Thank you, Frank. Next up is the introduction of Police Officer John Vendetti. I hope I pronounced it correctly. All righty, come on up here and introduce yourself or be introduced properly, sir.
My name is John Vendetti. So I originally predicted from East Lake Forest and Craven County and Newport, June of two thousand and two this year. It'll be a while to find me jobs, but I finally landed with this company that I love so much. So I'm currently a police officer. I love this town, but the smallness of it, the realness. You guys are definitely neighbors to neighbors, so I like that as a family. Currently, I'm in eight years in the Army, four years in the Marine Corps. Military police officer in the Army in artillery in the Marine Corps. And other than that, married, no kids, live in Bangor, so I drive a little ways. Don't roll that against me. But always in that, I'm looking forward to serving at whatever you need.
Well, thanks so much. Glad you're here, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is a resolution of appreciation for NC Representative Pat McElraff. I'll read this off you gentlemen. Whereas Pat McElraff served the people of Carteret County and all of North Carolina has dedicated and trusted public servant for 23 years. Whereas her distinguished career includes service on the Emmettown Board of Commissioners, the Carteret County Board of Commissioners, and in the NC House of Representatives, Representative 13th District, including Carteret and Jones County. Whereas her service in municipal county and state government provided her with a comprehensive understanding of and helpful perspective on important issues affecting the people of North Carolina. And whereas she was committed to addressing the issue that mattered most to the people of Carteret County and coastal North Carolina worked tirelessly on behalf of our community. And whereas her commitment, intelligence, understanding, tenacity, and compassion enabled her to serve her community in an exceptional manner, enabled her to earn respect of many and ascend to various leadership positions in the NC House of Representatives over eight terms in office. Whereas she was always accessible to local leaders in Carteret County, was always willing to help with our issues and concerns, build positive and productive relationships, and was a trusted partner and helped to move our local communities forward and prosper. And whereas she was particularly helpful to the town of Cape Cod during recent years, helping to secure beneficial traffic signal improvement and secure funding for the construction of Cape Carteret Trail. Now for be it resolved that the Cape Carteret Board of Commissioners expresses its sincere appreciation to retiring NC Representative Pat McElraff for her dedicated service to the people of Cape Carteret, Carteret County, and all of North Carolina. Our community is much better placed because of her service down at Cape Carteret, which is her a happy, healthy, and fulfilling retirement. I love a motion to approve this resolution. Second? All in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. And we'll try to get that to her, understand she's visiting family and couldn't make it here this evening. Next up is the consent agenda. Any questions about that?
Just one clarification with Frank. Frank, on this, just for public knowledge, the NC LM safety grant application resolution you're asking for in the consent agenda, if this is approved, you will come before the board to discuss the purchase of it. John, dear, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. It's a grant application for $2,000. If we're awarded for that, we'll come back to you with a resolution to accept the grant and then the eventual expenditure of the funds if the board is so inclined. So I'm hoping that will be at the January meeting agenda, but it depends on the grant award cycle.
Thanks. Any other questions about the consent agenda? Concerns? Not a motion to accept?
Motion to accept consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, resolution accepting the June 30, 2022 audited financial statements. I believe we have gentleman online, make sure he's still there, Mr. Grissom.
Yes. All right, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for allowing me to present remotely this evening. Here to present the June 30, 2022 audit. My name is Lee Grissom, the firm's Espress and Douglas and Associates. It was a good audit this year. This is our first year auditing Cape Carteret. We had three auditor opinions. All of them were... Well, the first one is the financial statement audit opinion, which we issued an unmodified, also referred to as a clean audit opinion. That's our highest level assurance. The second one's a yellow book audit opinion where we were required to test internal controls. The third audit opinion was a state single audit, which we were required to do, perform compliance field work surrounding the SCIF grant that was $500,000 of grant funds this fiscal year. In all cases, though, it was a good, clean audit. In our professional opinion, you can rely on the financial statements at June 30, 2022. We were able to issue the audit November 1st, so it was a month ahead of the December 1st deadline to the local government commission who approved the report. Overall, with our first year, we were very impressed with your finance officer, Sandy, extremely organized, sent us everything in a timely manner. We also thought the, from internal control standpoint, although there's a smaller staff at the town, you guys outsourced to a lady named Alicia. So you get a good bang for the buck with the outsourced arrangement where she comes in at the end of the fiscal year and cleans up various items for the audit. So that works really well. As far as a internal control standpoint, also, there's only two or three journal entries that we noted, so that's a good indication that the books were in good shape and can be relied on throughout the year. So it was not a mess from our standpoint. Anything below five journal entries for a small municipality is considered a good thing. And again, the finance officer, as well as Frank, who came in later in the fiscal year, did a great job helping with the financial statements. It was 65 pages in total, so it's a big effort. And given it was our first year auditing the town, you know, did a lot of work helping us with that report. And also, there were no budget findings, so the town did a terrific job staying within the budget, so no issues there. Before we get to the... Is there any questions? Okay. Townwide net position at June 30, 2022 was $4.2 million. That was an increase of $372,000. General fund was well above the average for municipalities this size. So we'll see that in a moment in the graphs. American Rescue Plan Act funds received were $328,000. So you're seeing a lot of municipalities receive that money this fiscal year. One unusual thing to note, if you were just, if you follow all the audits, the previous audits, both the SCIF funds and the American Rescue Act funds, only the money that was spent was recognized as revenue. So if you look at the balance sheet, the governmental balance sheet, you'll notice, I think, 600, around 680,000 of unearned revenue that when that money is spent, the SCIF funds of $500,000 and the American Rescue Act funds of 328, when all that money's spent, it will be reported as revenue with the matching expenditures. So you'll notice that's a little bit unusual to see that on the balance sheet. Couple of housekeeping items. During this audit, we did not encounter any difficulties with management. There were no new accounting policies, and we did not have any disagreements with management, and we did not consult with other auditors. Couple of notes before we get to the graphs also. If you look at the financial statements, just be aware that there's a lot of estimates out there, particularly the state of net, the statement of net position, statement of activities, pension liabilities, for example, 248,000. These are actuarially determined numbers, and there's a lot of estimates involved. Same with depreciation expense. You know, there's some estimates there that, you know, depending on what useful life you use, it could change the answer. And also allowance for doubtful accounts, a lot of times can come up with different answers. The main thing we're trying to do is we look at the finances of the town and make sure a consistent approach on these estimates are made from year to year, so they don't deviate. There were two findings to report. The first one is, and this was in the yellow book auditor opinion, which is our internal control audit opinion. So the first finding is segregation of duties. And this one's basically because your finance director is basically a one-man show, performing payroll, accounts payable, bank rec, basically doing a lot of the, way too many functions than what would be ideal. A lot of smaller municipalities have this finding, and I anticipate going forward, you will have this finding every year. The town had a corrective action plan that, in response to this finding, is on page 62, if you want to mark that, to look at that, 62 in the audit. But again, the town has limited personnel, so you really, you really want to have a separate payroll person, separate payables person, you know, different, separate person to collect cash, separate person to perform the bank recs. And really, just given the number of staff, there's not enough to separate the duties. The second finding noted, now this one's a little bit, you will not see this finding going forward. There's a finding because your SCIF funds, which that was $500,000 received during the fiscal year, should have been set up in a separate fund, and that was co-mingled in the, well, that was reported in the general fund, and that's going to be corrected for the next fiscal year, so you should not see that. It's relatively minor overall. It was just an oversight and is easily corrected, but that was a finding that we had to report. So overall, you'll see, it's a good audit. And let's run through the, let's look at the graphs right now. You should have copies of the graphs. Okay, we have five graphs to go through. There's five fiscal years of information for each graph, just to give you a little bit of historical perspective. The first one is analysis of fund balance, governmental funds. And as you can see, we're in June 30, 2022, the far right column, you're at 2.3 million, and that's the highest in the last five fiscal years. And this is mostly your general fund, fund balance by fiscal year. So if you look at 2018, you were all the way at 1.2 million, so a nice steady increase over the last five fiscal years. Let's go to the second one. Now, this is total cash, all funds by fiscal year. Again, all the way back 2018, you were right at 1 million, and now the town, June 30, 2022, are at right under $3 million. Now, this one, that's the SCIF funding and the ARPA funding that I pointed out earlier that depending on what the town decides to do after June 30, 2022, is whether that cash will remain there. So that's a little bit of an outlying thing. Let's go to page three. This is number of months in reserve for general fund, and this is your unassigned fund balance over your general fund expenditures. It's shown as a percentage and typically, and you're at 89%, just, just under, pretty close to 100% would represent 12 months in reserve of unassigned fund balance in the general fund. So you're above average where you need to be. The average municipalities this size is 63%, so you're at 89%. And the minimum is at 34%. So you're in good shape here in the general fund, fund balance. Let's go to the next one. This is long-term debt by fiscal year. Not a lot of debt in the last fiscal, last five fiscal years at the town of Cape Carteret. This year was the biggest jump where you leased vehicles. At June 30, 2022, your total debt was 95,000, and most of that's vehicle debt. Let's go to the fifth one. This is the last graph. This is property tax collection percentage by fiscal year. And in the last five fiscal years, it's been relatively flat. You're at 99.45%, so in good shape from a property tax collection standpoint. Is there any questions about anything I've gone over?
Questions, Gus?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to reiterate the comment from Lee and just publicly thank Sandy Fabro and especially Sandy Fabro for her work in managing the town's finances, very diligent, and appreciate her efforts, appreciate the efforts of all the staff. But a lot of work goes into this, and so kudos to Sandy. And as he mentioned, as I put included in the written comments, the town's very fortunate. We have a good, sound financial position. Our challenge is to keep it that way and improve it going forward, and we'll certainly do everything we can to make that happen.
All righty, well, thank you so much for being with us, Lee. We sure appreciate the work.
Yes, thank you. Have a good evening.
And thank you, Sandy. We appreciate the work. That's a very thankless job, Felix. Very thankless.
Mayor Baker, if the board is so inclined, I'd ask you to consider the resolution included in the pack. Thank you.
So do I have a motion to accept the audited financial statements? I'll second. All in favor? All right. Thank you for reminding me sometimes. I forget.
Sorry.
Mind's a terrible thing. All right, next up is the ordinance amending the table of permitted and special uses and unified development ordinance to reduce the number of special uses.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. I'm just pulling up a copy of the zoning map on the screen, just in case it's helpful as you think about this. You have an ordinance before you that is a little bit daunting when you look at it because it makes several changes to the table of permitted and special uses in our unified development ordinance. And most of these changes involve eliminating uses that are currently delineated as special uses and making those permitted uses by right. This is something that I've worked with the planning board on over the last three or four months and had many discussions with the planning board about this issue. As I've shared with the group in the past, our unified development ordinance includes what I would consider to be an unusually high number of special uses. And so this was a deliberate effort to reduce the number of special uses and classify most everything as either a permitted use by right, or if it's not listed with a P in this table, then it's just not allowed in that particular zoning district. And there are several reasons for that. One is that in everything that we do at the town, we are trying to make things more simple and straightforward, more easily understood by everyone, by the staff, by the governing body, by the planning board, by applicants, by our citizens, by others that are interested in the development issues that are going on in the town. So this is really viewed as an effort to make things simpler and more straightforward. It's really intended to provide more certainty, both for any applicants or developers that might apply for new development in the town, also for our citizens, so that they have a better idea of what to expect in a particular zone or in a particular neighborhood in the town. It's also rooted in, quite frankly, reducing the potential for conflict in the community in the future. In my experience, the special use permit process, while it can be helpful in certain instances, certain development applications in certain zones, it tends, in my view, to foster more conflict in the community. And I'm trying very deliberately to reduce the potential for conflict. And I think the efforts that I just mentioned to you to make it simpler, more straightforward, more predictable, more certain for people, hopefully will contribute to that and reduce the level of conflict. The other key thing about this and some of the frustration that came out in one of the earlier special use permit hearings is that the process that is used to judge a special use permit application is a quasi judicial hearing. There are very strict requirements for how that hearing is conducted and what interaction the decision makers can have with the applicant or with members of the community. By switching to a permitted use by right, it reduces our reliance on that quasi judicial process going forward, and it really puts everything into more of an, either an administrative or legislative process. And again, in my view, I think that fosters more transparency and more opportunities for communication between applicants and the decision makers, between citizens and the decision makers. That's a key piece of the recommendation that you have before you tonight. In a nutshell, essentially, after going through this entire table with the planning board members at several meetings, it essentially makes everything listed a permitted use. There is a list on page two of the memorandum in your packet that outlines those uses that would continue to be special uses. And generally speaking, the approach here was to take those uses that are generally outdoor type uses or larger uses that are maybe more likely to have an impact on nearby property owners. So they're generally outdoor type things, larger things that might cause more concern in the community. So for example, if the board approves this ordinance tonight, dog training facilities in the B-20 and B-30 zones would still be a special use. Driving ranges in the B-20 zone would still be a special use. Family amusement and entertainment venues in the B-20 zone would still be a special use, i.e. Mac Daddies or something along those lines. Furniture manufacturing and woodworking in the B-20 zone, go-kart tracks in the B-20 zone, manufactured or mobile home parks in the B-30 zone, pet daycare and boarding facilities in the B-20 zone, planned residential developments in all the residential zones. Those are typically things like a planned unit development, a master planned community. Unlikely we would have something like that, but potentially maybe in the Triangle area in the future. That would still be a special use permit. And then private outdoor recreational facilities. And the basic approach that we took at the staff level and then communicated to the planning board, and I think they agreed with in making the recommendation, is that if it's a use that's happening on the inside of the property, that's generally probably fine, not too concerned with what's going on inside because the impacts would generally be confined to the inside of that facility, and tried to focus on things that were more outdoor type uses, things that had a greater potential to cause problems. So just those one, two, three, four, nine uses would be special uses in the future. Everything else in that table, if it's listed with a P, it's a permitted use. If it's not listed, it's not allowed in that particular zoning district. That doesn't mean that these new developments won't be regulated and controlled and efforts made to minimize the impacts on the neighbors. There are a whole host of other regulations that the town has in the unified development ordinance. All of those things are still going to apply to any new development that occurs in Cape Carteret in the future. And there's a list on page three in your packet. I won't go through the whole list, but everything from lot sizes to setbacks to building heights to parking space requirements, to stormwater requirements, anything that's permitted use still has to comply with all of those requirements. And if we do a good job on the front end as your staff and as your planning board and ultimately the board of commissioners in coming up with the requirements that we think are appropriate in this community, that should mitigate any impacts that come along with those permitted uses that are included here. If it's not listed on that table of permitted uses, either the applicant needs to identify a zone where it is permitted, maybe doesn't move forward with their plans, or they can request either a rezoning to the particular zone where that use is allowed, or they can request a text amendment, basically ask the planning board and the board of commissioners to put a P next to that particular use in that particular zone. That is a legislative process that allows for unlimited dialogue between the decision makers and the applicants. That also involves public hearings and posting notices and all of those kinds of things, too. So if there's a built-in process, I think, to provide the transparency and the public input that we all would be looking for in these situations. There is one other change that's included in this ordinance amendment. On page four, there's a summary of that. It's section 8.22 of the ordinance, and it's basically determining the status of unlisted uses. You may recall that the UDO currently includes a provision that says if the use is not listed, that the applicant can apply for a special use permit for it. This basically removes that provision, and it essentially says what I just explained to you, that if the applicant applies for something that's not listed in there, either they can't do it, or they can request a rezoning or a text amendment. If they happen to disagreement, disagree with the staff's interpretation, we're going to generally try to find the closest match in the table of permitted and special uses. And if it's pretty close, we'll make a judgment and we'll say, yeah, it's a permitted use, or maybe that it's not. But if the applicant disagrees with the staff interpretation, the last resort is they can always go to the board of adjustment, and they can appeal that interpretation by the staff. Hopefully, we don't get to that too often, but that's the process that we would use going forward. We would no longer be considering something that's not listed as a special use permit application. So that's kind of the high-level changes. One of the things I think that's important for all of us to keep in mind as you review this is the context is important. You have to realize what we were starting. We started with the table of permitted and special uses that you have on the books right now, and that was adopted, I think, within the last year or two as part of that process. There may be other things, as you look at this table of permitted special uses, that you may say, gosh, I don't know if I agree with that, or I don't know if I think that should be permitted or not permitted at all. There may also be some historical decisions that were made five years, 10 years, 20 years ago that maybe don't quite match, your recollection doesn't quite match. And just know that we started with what's on the books right now, and we focused on the special uses and whether or not we should change them to a permitted use or keep them as a special use. So that was the task. That's what we focused on. If the board adopts this tonight, it will go into effect. There's a public hearing required, and you need to conduct a public hearing. If the board adopts this tonight, it would go into effect tomorrow. We would start applying this to any future development applications that come to the town. I'm a firm believer that we should constantly be assessing the effectiveness of our ordinances, whether it's accomplishing enough of what we want to accomplish, or maybe, maybe if it's overkill and we need to get rid of it. So I expect that we'll continue to monitor how the ordinance works, and if appropriate, take ordinance amendments, further ordinance amendments to the planning board and then ultimately to the commissioners to consider in the future. But I think this is a good step to achieve the goals outlined at the beginning, and appreciate your consideration tonight. Any board?
So we need to do a public hearing, though, correct? All right, so let's do that first. There's no objection, and I'll entertain a motion to go out of regular meeting into a public hearing.
I move to go into public hearing.
Second. All in favor? All in favor? All righty, we are now in the public hearing for the ordinance, ending the table of permitted and special uses. Do we, we didn't have anybody ever sign up? Okay. Would I like to make a comment? No, we'll go out and go back to regular meeting. All right, I'll entertain a motion to go back.
Back to regular meeting.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Thank you. Welcome back to regular meeting. Thank you all for coming back. Appreciate that. These are very serious, though. Make sure that if you did have something you want to talk about, we're a small town. I'd like to give that opportunity, whether you signed up or not. Any questions for Frank about the ordinance?
I have one question. I was just, I think you might have touched on this, but what, what is the next step? If we approve this as you have it written tonight, what is the next step for you with this?
Yeah. We'll put it into action tomorrow, so if someone comes with an application tomorrow, and then it'll be a matter of just working with applicants. A few minutes ago, we've been coming on all of special use that monitor, and eventually come back to you in the future. There are things that may continue to do a better job, Frank, and more commissioners. There may be some things that maybe we regulated too much, loosen up. And so it's really kind of a iterative process. Forward, on a broader scale, one of my goals, so I'd really like to take a shot with planning, simplify, hopefully make it a much thinner document.
All right, and I'll entertain a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt this. I do have a couple of things that I would like to add. So what I'll do is I'll just make a motion to approve it as written with the exception of, I think, adding bumper boats and batting cages to the special use, because we already have go-karts and driving ranges and family amusement. And then I don't really understand the star with the P, so I kind of think we should move away from the star. I just don't understand what it, I don't get what it, what its intent, but it might go back, there might be something there that would make more sense, but I just don't understand that. And then I would like to say tonight, this board, to task the planning board to begin to look at the individual sections. I mean, this is, this is a big deal, you know? We are now taking something in. We're just basically saying that this is now permitted by right, where there's no review but for town staff. And so I would like to say that we are tasking the board with, the planning board, with going through the individual sections. I think this is your intent anyway, to go through the different zoning districts, that this would be the columns, and really evaluating, do these make sense? For example, one of the things was, you know, churches are in all zoning districts, but I think we have an ordinance that says they have to be five acres. That's just one example of it making sense. So I think just as it's written, those three things is my motion on the floor right here.
Yeah, so certainly in that case, recommendation package changes special use permits back. Simple would just not make that change, stay special. Well, can absolutely make that change, and if there are specific uses in here that you'd like to change, leave it at special. Or if it's listed, special use, you just want to make it permitted by all means, please. With regard to the asterisk that's included next to the column, I would submit to you, we really don't even need that asterisk. It's simply that there's other requirements used as all spelled. Doesn't hurt to have it there, but we're gonna apply.
All right. Okay, would you repeat that again, but sort of condense that last?
So the motion, as it's written and proposed, add or keeping bumper boats and batting cages as special use, removing the asterisk for the, there's something here that have an asterisk next to the P, and then tasking the planning board to review these zoning districts and columns.
Okay. All right, we'll have a second for that motion.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Kind of lost me there. I think your motions need to be separated. I think paying attention to what this agenda item is, is one party motion, and then now you're adding something else in your motion to direct planning board. I think that should be later, at a later date. It's my thinking. That's why I couldn't, I can't support your motion as motioned.
But is it just for the planning board part?
Yeah, I think we're getting off base here, off topic, off the agenda, actual agenda. And honestly, since the planning board has so much input into this, I just feel like, I agree with you on those two items, but I feel like since they've got so much invested in it, maybe it needs to go back to them to discuss those two items and then come back. Just my opinion.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, they've got so much to, I think Frank said, three meetings involved in just this resolution. I mean, it's just to be fair, maybe they could add something, but I agree with you.
So, but what you're saying is, instead of approving it in the motion tonight, we would send that back to the planning board to see if they could go back through?
I think that, and then your direction, I think, would probably be better coming with your permission before to ask that be put on the agenda for next month. That's just my way of thinking.
Okay.
Just kind of simplify things.
Okay. So would you like to retract your initial, if I do this wrong, your initial motion?
Yeah.
Well, actually, is it not to interfere with you, is it important that we adopt this tonight as is, or can we, Brett?
You don't have to adopt.
Table it and let them, let them at the next planning board meeting, meet on those two issues and then bring it back.
That's, I mean.
I would hate to do that because then we're kicking that can down the road, you know, getting this thing implemented.
I'm just asking the proper procedure on that.
Yeah, I think we ought to vote on the.
We'll adopt this agenda. Yeah, adopt this agenda and then send it back to the planning board for those two.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Because we can perpetually change anything we want.
I don't want to hinder progress, but I do want to, you know, us all to sort of agree. So I'm okay with, I'm okay with, well, I don't know how I would.
We can make a motion to adopt this agenda, and then in your comments, you can, you can ask another motion for sending it back to the planning board and directing the planning board.
Okay.
You can make motions in your commissioners.
Okay, then I will, I will do that. So I'm going to modify my motion now to just be approving this as written.
Okay.
Because it's minor things, it's not.
And I'll second that.
Yeah.
All in favor? All right, that's where, you know, this is, I hate to use the term living, reading document, but it is, and there's something we'll be working on, you know, forever, but anything you got like that, we can always have staff.
Yeah, they're minor things, so I'm not going to hold them.
Yeah, all you gotta really do is just ask Frank to get the planning board to meet on it.
Okay. Frank's already made a note. All right, gentlemen, next up is the resolution authorizing engineering services contract with Dewberry Engineers Incorporated for Arden Oaks Stormwater Improvements. I'm sorry. What? I thought we just did.
Yeah.
No, thanks. Sometimes, like I say, sometimes I forget things. I'm much, I'm much ready to interrupt me and then let me go on. No, please don't. I appreciate you looking out for me. I need help, obviously, sometimes. So anyway, resolution authorizing engineering services contract with Dewberry Engineers Incorporated for Arden Oaks Stormwater Improvements.
I put an image up on the screen, and I've got a copy of this image in your agenda packet. What you have for you tonight is resolution authorizing the contract with Dewberry Engineers. For our rally, total amount of the contract is $43,700. As part of that contract, they would complete the dime permitting bidding with construction administration services for stormwater improvements in Arden Oaks. And generally combined to the area, yellow, that's on the screen and also included in your packet. Essentially, as I think you all are probably aware, with flooding in Arden Oaks near the entrance to that subdivision, they will typically, as contrasted, they will typically be looking at issues and determining appropriate improvements so that, for the future. Some of the things that we've talked about, conceptually include some large man or a combination existing intention area that's right here. Like, more importantly, I think you've got to identify some sort of out with stormwater immediately in that area. There is a creek that you can see on the image. It actually straddles property lines between a couple of different parcels right here that ultimately flows down next to a little river. That may be an area that we look to ultimately discharge the stormwater from this area. There's also an existing ditch on the road on bicycle path that, well, but that's really why you should, you know, it has to come up. I'll be working closely with them, and then ultimately come back to you. So this is the second location that we would be tackling, and we all know, including the contract with Southern Drive area, that you're meeting a couple months ago. This is the second location we'd be tackling, as potentially by Dewberry, because they've worked on previous work in this area, part of the town's previous RCTP grant, civilian community planning grant. They've got some familiarity with this area also. I've also potentially tried to assign these to different engineers, locations, that they hopefully manage an appropriate amount of contract, it's $43,700, below the threshold of statutes, because they have some, well, committed to contract with these. The funding for this is coming from the capital project audience that we all drew earlier this summer. We have a grand total of $712,000. That is the RPA funding that the town receives, is also grant funding, RCTP grant, as well as emergency management, disaster relief mitigation grant. Part of the trick to this exercise is to ride out the particular location with the particular grant. This particular, all the money is in the capital fund, the particular location, since they're trying to use the RCTP grant funding. That's got the quickest deadline of funds, and also has complete construction. A little bit of magic in trying to match that. So if you approve this tonight, I would expect that Dewberry would begin on dime work, publish for that holidays, and hopefully come back with construction contracts sometime in spring, summer, in the market. Summer, there's a capping of all that. Really trying to move these things along. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Frank, how accurate? I'm assuming the yellow ball is the affected area of the flooding. How accurate is that?
That's really just conceptual, that's the general area. So in reality, they'll be looking at the entire Arden Oaks neighborhood.
I didn't know someone had already identified that as the exact impact.
No, it's essentially, that's the area. Thanks for that question.
I'm just glad that you're moving forward at the pace you're moving forward to get some of these areas some help.
If you look at that next to last picture on your packet that he has in that presentation, you'll see that sort of is that area. When I went down there right after it flooded, it is, it's pretty darn active. The issue is, it's a bowl, so that's going to be the challenge for the engineering firms, trying to figure out where they can find an adequate egress for that without affecting adversely any of the properties. So wish him well on that.
I've seen some field being placed up there. Is that being done by the builder or?
Yeah, there's a few homes, new homes that are under construction. We did bring in, well, we did also require them, for the homes that are, feature, so to get, when you burn stuff, it's on the home.
Obviously, that water's got to go somewhere. You mentioned the creek. I don't know what that's going to entail, but wait and see, I guess.
Yeah.
It's got to start somewhere.
Yeah, we'll take a hard look at that, and I imagine that if that's property owners or even so forth, we'll see.
Sounds very complicated.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing Dewberry Engineers.
Okay, have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Gentlemen, next up is the resolution authorizing engineer services contract with RK&amp;K Engineering for the bog sound drive stormwater improvements.
Yeah, very similar to the previous item, the next location, bog sound drive, we've got a project, really getting conceptual, the gamble area that would be addressing stormwater in the term. As you know, there's significant issues at this location also, some critical storm events, really just a low spot, it's very, positive terrain, area, interesting, existing pretty significant stormwater ditch in that area as well. Now, it's a contract, $48,538, RK&amp;K Engineering, Harley, selected his firm because they helped my predecessor grant application, and hopefully become successful for a location. So they go on that, very, you can issue this location. I mean, also they will take advantage of that, that's who does credit for it. Ultimately, in this location, then we may make some pitch improvements, we may need to acquire industry, create some new information, attention basis, we may make some improvement to the pitch features in that area. Similar to the timeframe, look into the board's resolution contract, and then come back in spring, summer. Hopefully both. Again, same funding source. In this particular situation, if the emergency management disaster improvement grant, more appropriate funding source tied to particular location, there's some slight nuance in the grant program. This particular grant has a longer time. If you approve this contract, we will still have approximately 700 acres. And that'll essentially be, we'll, we'll drop these locations.
What was that number again?
And I think you all had previously identified twelve different locations, some of the grant applications. Six locations, tried to focus on these three because they seem to be the ones that I hear the most about, short time here. And also just trying to keep it
Forgot to ask this question at the last one. Do you, are we required to get these easements from the property owners before we before the engineers start?
If we need
Just like this instance in, in, in facial, sound drive, the, the property owners that you and I discussed about the ditch. Do you have to obtain those easements before?
It really depends, I guess, on the degree. It may just be a right entry. Go onto the property, please, certain or clear if we are building something off their property, these need a temporary construction easement, permanent feature. I would expect that we may wind up getting these.
Go ahead.
Honestly, I hope that we can currently on that existing ditch feature that basically across Park Avenue. Park Avenue is right here where the curfew is. Boat Sound Drive is right here and there's sort of like an L shape ditch feature here. My understanding is that it's a really important feature, but we don't have And we may want to construct it.
Well, I, I'd just like to throw this in, the, the, prior to you coming, when Zach was here, there's been some conversations with property owners in that ditch area, and they are all willing to, to, to give the town an easement, but that's something you need to pursue on your own or whatever. I'm just telling you, they're, they're all excited about it. So there's been some conversation with Zach and those property owners too, so. Just pass that on to you. Any more questions? All right, have a, have a motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the engineering service contract with RK and K Engineering for the Boat Sound Drive Stormwater Improvement.
Have a second.
I'll say.
All right, all in favor? General? So your neighbors, you know, if anybody asks you, Steve, they will be probably doing some survey.
I'll live on that.
So they may see some people. I'm sure they'll let them know. I've, I've already told one of them, so I'll, I'll make a pass through there tomorrow until, just be on the lookout. All right, next up is ordinance amending chapter seventy-four parking schedules of the code ordinance prohibit parking on the west side of Manatee Street on the intersection of Neptune Drive to a point roughly two hundred twenty-five feet south on Manatee.
So the propos, the ordinance would essentially just establish a no parking zone on the west side of Manatee. Neptune, that's the area indicated in red, on graphic on the screen. So that's an area where occasionally there are folks who are using public boat line facility at Manatee. They park on right away in that area. In this particular location, two homes, there's only two homes in that area. Lots of picture is back in very nice. On, on, you got a request for no parking zone in that area. We currently have a no parking zone in right across But with a reasonable request, it requires no parking zone. We would not expect without answering questions.
Well, we're going to have to come back when they build a house on the vacant lot and do this all over again. That's what I was getting ready to say, I guess.
Go ahead, can I ask the board something? If, if the police department or the manager identifies they park an issue near one of the streets, can we not authorize the town manager to go ahead and take care of it instead of having to do all this?
I agree. I mean, this
I don't see a need. Every time we need a parking sign, we all got a bug on it. I don't. It's just that the manager do it. The manager and the police department.
I'm fine with it. They used to have signs on that section.
I mean, I don't see a need for it to keep on coming back to others. I mean, there'll be
Board can certainly take that action. Bring it to work if that's your pleasure.
I'd like to see that ordinance.
I'm fine with that, too.
So we want to approve this one and then let him take it over from there?
Yeah.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, we need to make a motion on this one, and then he'll, he'll call them together, uh, ordinance to handle it from there. How's that? All right, so they have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Prove it as stated.
And all in favor? All right, thank you, gentlemen. And town manager report.
There are seven pages of updates. Um, with the approval of the meeting schedule for next year, I just want to point out that everybody in the public meeting on Monday, January thirty is really not too many for the six of you, uh, town leaders to discuss bigger picture. To keep the goal, you have both for the next budget year and then follow. That's a really important discussion for me, that me and the staff, the direction to do things like the really important to me that all six of you are there for that. Now, but everybody, at this point, if something comes up, please let me know that. Uh, just because it's really, it's a really crucial meeting from my perspective, but I want to make sure that we are including funding for things that are important to you both in the short term. Appreciate that. Wanted to mention that that there is a grant application that's called the My intent at this point is to get an application for additional funding for the bicycle path in the triangle area. One point one mile segment that we have. Maybe perhaps consider some sort of trailhead feature. Not much to get it tomorrow. I'm outside, so I expect probably in January, maybe Michael Moore, as you probably saw, real I included a little explanation in here. You all had talked a couple meetings ago about directed some research on cost. Install additional bulkhead, that's very landing park. I have three quotes for that. Maybe a range, including the detail from four five to seventy-five thousand dollars range. Still close to the nowhere. You all hung loose over with that. January, that's an option for you, other options. Please chief, I have extended a conditional offer. And thank The building is back there, don't need to go down. Still working on that. We had applicants for that. Still considering two individuals at a time. Sure, strategy forward, HR. There is a park recreation trust fund, grant program, and those applications are first, one of those things that I want to discuss with people. All right, there's some big ticket I That's typically about two or five hundred thousand. Lots of other things here. Right now. Got any questions?
I've got one, Frank. I would, uh, I'd like for you to place on the January agenda discussion for accepting quotes on the bulkhead in August, June. My feeling is we'll never be financially, more financially stable than we are now, so there's no use in kicking it down the road. But I'll bring that up and then on the agenda, we'll discuss it in January. Also, just one more. I just want to point out one thing, and I think I'm right. Brett can when we start discussing this, uh, grant application for, um, a potential boat ramp. I think just remember, if we accept grants, then we have to open that facility up to anybody in the United States. Is that correct, Brett?
Yeah, a lot of them have conditions that they have to be It depends on the grant terms, but those grant terms will include a condition that's
I just want to throw that out there. That's it. Thanks, Frank. Anybody else have more questions, Frank? If not, then we'll move on to commissioner reports. I'm going to start with you tonight. Mr. Watts.
Okay. Um, well, first I wanted to say, uh, the town did a great job with the Fall Festival. You know, we haven't seen each other since, uh, that, and, um, you know, I was, I was there. I was seeing everyone. My kids also really enjoyed the BMX bike performance. I thought that was pretty cool. Those guys did a great job. The food was fantastic, um, very healthy. So, um, I just want to say thanks to the town for that. Uh, you had it in your town manager reports. Thank you for the repair on St. Augustine. That has been a eyesore for four years now, since Florence. Um, so we really appreciate that. Um, and then the last thing on my list is the, the, the planning board motion. What, what I'd really like to do is I really would like to, to send the, the things I said, and I'm going to go back over that, back to the planning board for sort of an assessment. Uh, I'm not sitting here going to say one way or the other, the way it should be or shouldn't be, but I would like an assessment by the planning board to see if this is something that sort of jives with what they have already done. I think they've done a lot of good work. Um, and so that, that motion would be to, um, task the planning board to review the permitted section. So this would be all of the, the zoning districts by right to make sure all of that stuff is, um, is kind of exactly how we need it to be in the town, because now it's permitted by right. There's no, there's no review process. Um, and so that's, that's number one. Uh, and then I would like to have them assess keeping the, um, bumper boats and batting as, uh, special use. Um, and then removing the asterisk, uh, I don't know, maybe that's just too easy to do. Um, and then one of the things that I thought of too was the whole trash thing. This might be a good time to put the trash in the, um, there's one spot in there that's architects, engineers, professional, just maybe including something on the trash that if, if you're that type of business, uh, that you can use one of the smaller cans and not, you know, have, have some of the issues we see. So I just think that might be a good place to, to make it sort of you know, codified for, for everyone that has that type of, that business. So, um, anyway, that, that's, that's what I had there. We'll go back over that. I don't want to, but that, that motion, can we vote on that?
You don't really have to make a motion.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, then that's what it is. You got, you got my thoughts, but I do think it's important for the, the planning board to, to review those things.
Oh, so there's concessions.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. Right, no, no, no. You, you are correct. Yeah, I don't, I just think it's important now that we've taken all those SUPs to P's. That's it.
I've got nothing to report. I want to thank Frank and all the town staff for all of the work they've done this year. I think we've accomplished a lot as a town this year. Got a lot of good projects moving forward. I see a lot of good things happening with the town. Just want to thank all of you for your hard work. And, and we should everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy and a healthy new year.
Yeah, I agree. I think that Mr. Miller said, thank you absolutely. Staff tremendous job. Thank you so much. Twenty twenty been a few little hills and mountains, but that's all good. But we're starting to see some things happen in Cape Cod, and things are starting to flourish. And I want to see this continue. I'm excited about what we are able to do. I love to know that what we have done in the financial end of the town looks good. It's great. I think it will be the best it's ever been. And I'm looking forward to moving forward. Thank you and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Y'all have a good new year. Dave? Yeah, I want to thank the staff for their hard work too, and especially our finance officer, Sandy. And to those of us that were serving in twenty seventeen, Don, this tells the story. Three point nine months reserve in twenty eighteen. I bet it wasn't a month and a half in twenty seventeen. We were in dire straits then. It's pretty nice to look at this and see what conservative fiscal responsibility does to uh, Merry Christmas to everybody. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I just got a couple of things. I just wanted to reiterate about the Fall Festival. I thought it was a great success. Staff did an amazing job on that. And, you know, to be a small town and put something like that together, it's a lot of strain on our staff. So I, I personally, working for a town, know what that's like. So thank you. Can't not thank staff enough. You know, it works too. You guys have been doing an amazing job. Right? And just, I just can't say great things about that. I do want to mention there were a few things that happened because we, we did miss November. Uh, the turkey trot, chappelle on Thanksgiving Day, put on by Deanna in the gym. That was an amazing success. There was almost five hundred people showed up for that. I had no idea there were that many people that were willing to run on Thanksgiving morning. It just, I was like, just every year it gets bigger and bigger, and I'm just amazed. And, and she'll be bringing a check to us soon, uh, which was that about was raising money for that trail. So she's a great business lady, a great business partner. Very lucky to have people like that in our town that are willing to do such great things for our town. So, uh, kudos and thank you to Deanna and the gym for that amazing event. Just also want to, we had the ILA meeting recently, so you may see something about that in the paper about us going ahead and, uh, okaying to purchase a new ambulance. And, you know, you were there. Yeah, we're looking at, what is it, two to four years to get anything now, uh, that's, that's specially ordered, like an ambulance or a fire truck? It's, it's ridiculous how it is now. So the idea was we're going to go ahead and budget it, get the purchase done. We won't be paying for it for several years, but go ahead and get the ordering. So at least now in a few years when we do need it, we'll at least have one on the way. Uh, a lot of people, I, just like here, I always encourage people, go to these ILA meetings. That's your tax dollars. That's our fire and safety. You know, you're, you're part of that, you know, be sure to, you know, pay attention to these things, just like these board meetings. I always encourage people to come
I always encourage people to come and be a part of that. But right now, everything's great there as well. Also want to let you know that on July third, I believe the date was selected, we're going to have another fireworks display. Can't thank Mac Daddy's and all the businesses that have pitched in to make that one. I think will be another great, successful event as well. A lot of great things coming. We're doing a great job. I just can't say enough thank you to this board, you guys, because you take your time to come here and represent your town. We may not agree on everything, but, you know, we're all here for the right reason to do what we think is best for this town. And thanks again to our staff and you too, Brett, you're doing an amazing job. And Merry Christmas, I will say that. I know that's not popular in some places, but I feel that in our little small town, it's okay. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn.
We've got to go to.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot. Thank you, again, I knew it. One out of three, thank you. See, anyway, we need to go into a closed session. You're welcome to stick around for the adjournment if you want, want to, you know, don't want to miss that excitement, but I need to entertain a motion to go on the closed session. I'm just so eager to leave, sorry, guys. A second?
Second.
All in favor? And thank you, Merry Christmas. Feel free to stick around, but hopefully you have better things to do.
We're going to stay here for the closed session.
Okay. Take a break, guys.